First thing on the agenda will be the Pledge of Allegiance. And Mr. Kincaid, can you lead us, please?
I will.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Michael.
Welcome.
Roll call, please.
Yes, sir. Councilman Kincaid.
Present.
Councilman Campbell.
Here.
Councilman Jones, absent this evening. Councilman Robertson.
Here.
Councilman Copeland.
Here.
Councilman Wheat.
Here.
Councilman Messenger.
Present.
Thank you.
Okay, next thing on the agenda is approve the minutes of the last meeting. Everybody have a chance to look at those and...
I make a motion, we approve the minutes.
We have a motion to approve. Is there a second?
A second.
We have a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Eyes have it. Any old business tonight?
Not for me.
No old business. Well, let's jump right down to new business then. We have some food and beverage requests. Mark Branch is here representing the Lebanon Boys and Girls Club. Mr. Branch?
Good evening. As said, Mark Branch. I'm the new guy in town. I'm the new CEO with Boys and Girls Club of Boone County. I'm thrilled to be here to talk about our Lebanon Club. I actually go back to my career working with kids to the Lebanon community. I started working with kids at the Methodist Children's Home on Camp Street. Did that, actually met my wife there. I was blessed to work with Tom Temple and Dr. Davis. Left there, got exposed to Boys and Girls Club, and left to go work in Indianapolis as a club director 35 years ago. And so, I'm blessed to come back. I've been on the national staff for Boys and Girls of America last 13 years, but I live in Danville, so I know there's conference rivalry, so forgive me there, but we will in spring be moving to Boone County and looking to live in the Lebanon area. My wife runs an agency, a delinquency prevention agency in Crawfordsville, Montgomery County, so it's closer there, plus we still have tons of friends here in Lebanon, have made your last three fireworks sitting at the high school parking lot, so feel like we already know part of it and want to be part of the community, so look forward to being part of that. With that, just want to talk to you quickly about the Lebanon Club. I'm really excited as far as what we're doing there. I'm actually moving my office, and it's currently going to be in the Lebanon facility. We still have a corporate office in Zionsville, but I think it's important for me to be there. The Lebanon Club's had some difficult times recently. We've certainly gone through a lot of different executive directors, so I want to be there and be a part of that, and enjoy getting to know the kids and the families over there. The Lebanon Club averages about 120 kids every day of about 500 members for the course of the year. We have, every year, we have, or every day, excuse me, we have a full meal. We serve between 85 and 90 kids, a full meal, a full dinner during the school year, and a lunch, and what we call a dinner during the school year, and we provide breakfast and a snack as well during the summertime. About 65% of our kids are on free or reduced lunch, and we also have a before-school program where we're there at 6:30 in the morning for families that need to drop kids off. We have between 20 and 30 kids now, and then we actually transport them to their schools in the morning. So, we provide that service from 6:30 in the morning till 6 o'clock at night for kids. What, and our annual dues are $55 for kids. We do scholarships. It costs us about $514 a year to provide one service for one kid. Again, they pay maximums $55, so we use the rest of that gap that we need to close through fundraising efforts. That's why asking you for your support is so critical, because there's things we'd love to get for the kids but simply can't, because there are just simply priorities with the budget that we need to do, primarily staffing with two full-time and eight part-time staff that we have. One thing I did want to share, and again, I can't take credit for it because I'm the new guy, but one of the things the board has done with the merger and really look at the Lebanon Club is investing in the Lebanon Club, particularly in the facility. We have had a donation, I'll make sure I get it right, from Bone Dry Roofing. Gene Judd donated a wood floor for the gymnasium. We just wrote and received a $21,000 grant from ESPN to put the floor in and to have the two new goals at the end put in. We hope to do that over winter break, over Christmas, but I'm not sure that'll happen, but it will happen ASAP. We've also had support through REMC related to their roundup program, and we've done things with a new dishwasher in our food program. We've got new carpeting that we've secured from a variety of different sources, talking about former board president from the 80s. You may know Dallas Coe, Dr. Coe, and he's only making a $10,000 challenge gift for the end-of-year campaign restricted to Lebanon, but he's also going to pay for whatever needs to be done on the rest of our carpeting cost. So, a lot of people excited about what's happening in Lebanon and what they want to do to be a part of it. When we look at all the things we've done, from also a sports grant for a couple thousand dollars for new balls and things like that, new volleyball nets, by January, since this previous January, in those 13 months, we'll have invested about $100,000 between the in-kind floor and the other $50,000 primarily with grants that we've received or special initiative for funders. So, it's been outstanding, but it's been that kind of effort that's taken to get these things done. Some of the things, so what we're asking for basically is building an equipment improvement support. We have some things that are original to the club when it was built that need to be replaced from some internal structures. We have some equipment. Most of our equipment is donated equipment, so it's as good as it comes in, which is great, but with 120 kids a day playing on some of the games, it's not like it's sitting in your basement and you play it every, once in a while you play it at Thanksgiving and the family shows up. So, there's a real need for us to invest in that and put it there in the Lebanon Club with the kids. So, again, really excited about it. We have outstanding staff there. We do, unfortunately, we've lost a couple key full-time staff that have moved, one's moved out of state, the other one moved to Kokomo and can't make the commute, so we did hire a new unit director called, his name's Christian Stafford. He has eight years' experience working with Boys and Girls Club, so he started there maybe about 10 days ago, so we're building a staff around that with the part-time. But, we have some really outstanding staff, I keep saying that, but there's people I've talked to, there's a young man I think about who's Lebanon product with the high school here, and he's in college right now, and I'm trying to convince him to change his major to come work at a Boys and Girls Club when he's done, because he's that good and he's out there and he's a natural, so we want to invest in that, whether he goes into his sports field he wants to get into or whether I'm able to turn him and make him a Boys and Girls Club professional down the road. But, those are the kind of people that are running around Lebanon that we're blessed to work with and that are working with your kids here in Lebanon as well, so.
Any questions or... Any questions for Mr. Branch? John, do you have a report from the committee?
Yeah, we met with Mr. Branch and Katie Obrensky Reasoner on November 18th, and they made a very good presentation. Some of the things that we did find out, I was a member of the Boys and Girls Club many years ago, and it's the original floor when I was there, which is a tile floor in the basketball area. Some of the carpets are the same carpets from back then, so they need to move forward. There's other areas they're looking at, they're looking at sinks, dishwasher, paint, carpeting, and that doesn't even include the equipment they need for the kids. He talked about the, 2/3 of the kids there qualify for the food.
For the reduced lunch.
And, so, there is a need there, there's a great need there. And so, our committee met, and we would like to make a recommendation to the council, and I would request a motion for some funds for the Lebanon Boys and Girls Club.
Are you making a motion?
I will make a motion for $1,500 for the Lebanon...
We have a motion. Is there a second?
A second.
Go ahead.
Okay, I'll second.
We have a second from Brent. All those in favor approving $1,500 for the Boys and Girls Club, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Eyes have it.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Branch.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Next up is the Lebanon Welfare League, Joyce Douglas.
Good evening, city council members. Thank you for allowing Sue Muncy and I to present to the Food and Beverage Committee last week in regards to requesting funds to help offset our cost, our grocery cost for the Lebanon Welfare League. I'll introduce myself as a, I'm almost a 25-year member of Capit Delta Phi, which is KDP, which is the big umbrella for our Lebanon Welfare League. And we, it started, to give you a little past history of it for some of you, it started in 1937 with Harry Jones. And Harry Jones was part of Jones Burgess Gennaro, and that became Lamar &amp; Lamar. And to this day, we incorporate that insurance company to where our monetary donations can be dropped off, and people from throughout the community can make the check payable to KDP Lebanon Welfare League Christmas Basket Fund and drop it off at 120 North Lebanon, if I remember correctly, at Lamar &amp; Lamar. We also, when Harry started this, he started it with Mr. Yulen, and Mr. Yulen would anonymously go and, and he knew of families who were in dire need of not only Christmas presents but a Christmas dinner, a meal, food. And, so, he sought out those people, and he would leave baskets of food and gifts for them. And so, we continue that. When Harry moved to Florida, he asked one of our members, Ad Green, to continue the tradition, and to this day, we've done it. We're in our 82nd year of doing this for the community. We shop local. We provide meat certificates for each individual, our family, to choose meat at IGA, our local IGA. We also shop and buy canned, bagged, and prepared boxed food that we make an entire Christmas meal for them. And the caring center helps in regards to our applications are at the caring center along with their applications, which are separate from ours, and so, there's no duplicity because we check our list against theirs. And then, our current 19-member group, which is all volunteers, we're a nonprofit 501(c)(3) group, and our volunteers all meet on that Sunday before they pick up, the clients pick up, and we actually box the food that we've purchased from the grocery stores, and we use Aldi and Kroger, and we really thank them for their help. And usually, the fire department or the football team or FFA members, they all help load the truck at Aldi on that Saturday, and then Sunday, we box. And so, we would appreciate anything you can do to help offset, since groceries keep going higher, and we really want to provide for everyone. We don't like to turn anyone away, and the applications are there for people to fill out. And anyone that would like to sponsor a family, may call Sue Muncy at 482-3299, and she will help in that regards, too. They can choose a family, a size that they want to provide for and provide that meal. So, thank you.
Thank you, Joyce.
Any questions?
82 years is a long time.
82 years, yes. And we appreciate everybody. We shop local, we use local, and we continue that tradition.
Any questions for Joyce? John?
I will say that Joyce and Sue Muncy went with, met with the committee on November 18th. The Lebanon Welfare League, the Christmas Basket Program, also known as Capit Delta Phi, has 19 active members. The one thing, last year, they served 69 families, 359 individuals. She talked about all the shopping's done locally, the meat certificates go to Lebanon IGA, which keeps it within our city limits. The applications, like she said, goes to the caring center. The food is for Christmas home meal prepared at respondents' home. They can cook it themselves. They have all the things there ready to go. And then, last year, the largest family that they provided for was 12 in one family. So, it's a wonderful program. They help our community, they help the ones in need in our community, and it's something that we totally support when we can. And with that, would anyone like to make a motion?
I will entertain a motion.
$1,500. Our committee approved $1,500.
Make a motion, we provide $1,500 to the Capit Delta Phi food drive.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Looks like the ayes have it.
Thank you so very much. You don't know what this means. Thank you.
Keep up the good work.
Thank you.
19 powerful women.
Next up is the Lebanon Shalom House, Lisa Williams.
My name's Lisa Williams. I'm the executive director for Shalom House. Thank you so much for having me here this evening, so I can tell you a little bit about Shalom House. It was started back in 2003 by a few community members here in Lebanon, so it's a Lebanon organization. It's a 501(c)(3), and we do not receive any government funding. We are all volunteer-based organization, and we have two different food programs. So, the first food program I'm going to tell you about is our Shalom Kids' Lunch Program, and that's a program that runs the 13 weeks that public school is closed for an entire week. So, that's 10 weeks of summer, spring, fall, and winter break. What we do is we have nine different sites around the county, so we're in Advance, Jamestown, Whitestown, Lebanon, and there's one other place.
Thorntown.
Thorntown, thank you. We're in Thorntown. And we distribute lunches on Monday, the week that school is closed, and they're non-perishable meals that go home. So, it's five lunches and five breakfasts, so it's five entrees, five snacks, and five fruits and vegetables, two of which, the fruits and vegetables are fresh. We give them a milk voucher for Kroger. Their parents can go to Kroger and pick up a half a gallon of white 2% milk that they can use during the week. And the Lebanon Public Library gives us books so that they can choose a book of their choice, and they can take it home and keep it. So, we wanted to make sure that along with trying to get nutrition to families, that we also were going to get some books home that the kids could have. The kids that we're targeting are the ones that are receiving free breakfast and free lunch through public school, so they're on free or reduced, and these children are the ones that are at home, so they're not at summer camps and they're not able to leave the house, either because both parents are working and they're home, kind of like a latchkey kid, or because one parent is home with them but has no transportation because the other parent is at work. So, we want to make sure that they have food during the week that school's closed and that they don't have any way of getting out or they're not allowed to leave their house to get the food. So, last year, we served 4,509 kids, 22,545 lunches. Our other program is the Shalom House Hot Meals Program, and Shalom House is located at 304 West Green Street, which is on the south side of Lebanon, and it started, that house opened in 2005, although the program started in 2003 at the Old Stoke School that it used to be over in the center of town. I think they served 10 lunches the first time they were open. They had seen a need in the town, and they were targeting mostly senior citizens, but we are open to anyone. Anyone's welcome to come. So, we are open on Tuesday evening. We serve a community meal from 5:00 to 7:00 p.m., and then on Saturday, from 11:00 to 1:00. Everybody that comes in there, we have lots of seniors that are struggling on a budget that they can't afford, their meds, their rent, and food, so they like to come in there and have a nice, hot, balanced meal. We have lots of low-income families that the parents are working, but they're also struggling and have a busy schedule, so they like to stop in and have a meal with us as well. On Saturdays, we do a homebound delivery program to people around the, just within Lebanon city limits. So, they have to be seniors with no transportation and some sort of illness or disability. And we do have a couple people on there that are under 65 but are either wheelchair-bound or have some sort of disability that doesn't allow them to have transportation to travel. So, we deliver hot meals to them on Saturdays. Meals on Wheels can do Monday through Friday, but they don't deliver on Saturday, and quite frankly, most of the people in our program can't afford Meals on Wheels during the week. So, we're up to 68 to 70 meals that we're delivering every Saturday, which that program has almost doubled in the last year, and there's a waiting list for it. We have recommendations from, like, Wutham Hospital, from the Caring Center, and from Love Inc. for people that are in need, so that's how they kind of find us. We have three different volunteer teams that come in during the week. So, for the Tuesday meal, the Saturday meal, and then the delivery program are all volunteers. So, they prepare the food, serve it, and then they have to help us clean up the house. And last year, we served over 13,000 meals from the Shalom House. Now, towards the end of this year, we had a bit of bad luck. We had our dishwasher that broke, and so, we had to have it, we're still getting it repaired, and we also had a plumbing incident, so we had to have the plumber out, which, you know, we're going off of, you know, individual donations, so this isn't a good time of year to have that type of repair. So, what we're asking for today is, we want to make sure that all of our folks through December receive a good, healthy meal, and that we're able to continue to deliver to the delivery people through December.
Any questions?
No, they do a great job. You know, the city council worked at the Shalom House this past spring.
Yep, last March. March or May, but yeah.
I got a question. I see in the brochure here that it's sponsor a meal for $300. Is that a meal for a day?
That's for one day. So, we usually, the average is 120 meals every time we're open. We, for the last three weeks, we've seen like really high numbers. 200 was two Saturdays ago, 168 this Saturday, 170. We're not sure why there's an increase, but normally, if you were averaging through the year, we do 120 meals each time we're serving a meal.
So, someone out there in the community makes a donation, is this the address they send it to?
Yes.
304 West Green Street?
P.O. Box.
P.O. Box.
Yeah, P.O. Box 135.
Okay. Attention you?
Just Shalom House.
Just Shalom House?
Yeah, it goes to the treasures.
Okay. John, what you got, buddy?
Well, Lisa met with us. She made a great presentation tonight. All the facts and figures that she gave right there were all in my notes, so she's covered everything. Saturday, the 16th of November, they delivered 210 meals. On Saturday, the 9th of this last month or this month, they delivered 179 meals. In 2018, they delivered 13,000, or served, I'm sorry, 13,233 meals, just at that location for our community, for the people that we, we need to service and to help. So, they're an outstanding program. They help in so many different ways to help our community. Our committee has made a recommendation of $1,500 to be the Lebanon House of Shalom. Is that correct?
Shalom House.
Shalom House. That is our recommendation.
I have a, do I, do we have a motion?
I will make a motion. We donate $1,500 to the Shalom House.
Mr. Wheat? And Keith has made a second. All those in favor, wait a minute, you got a comment?
I have a second. Go ahead.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Looks like the ayes have it. Yes, John? Do you have something else?
We do have something else. Members of this council last, this last year did serve and helped at the Shalom House. We've also, some of us have done it over the course of the last several years when we get the opportunity and privilege to help you at your location. We know how important it is to do the dishes and things like that. It's a heavy-duty dishwasher that they have. I don't know anybody here that would want to use the sink that they have and use the hot water and put our hands in it and do all the pots and the pans and the dishes and the cups and everything that they have. So, our committee, after she had left, we made a recommendation, and we want to make a recommendation to this council, for an additional $1,200 for them to either fix or replace. That's a very important need that they have at that location, so we would make an additional $1,200 to replace or fix the dishwasher that they have there.
Let me, let me ask just to make sure, do you have, do you have that in our kitty to...
We do. I met with the clerk's office earlier this week, and we do have the funding out of our nonprofit monies.
Okay. Is that a motion?
That is a motion.
I have a motion to donate an extra $1,200 to the Shalom House for dishwasher, new dishwasher or improvements to the one that they currently have. Is there a second? Is there any discussion? Not hearing any discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those approve, same sign. Eyes have it.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
That means a lot.
It does. It's really, really, you need a dishwasher.
Yeah, the health department will be excited about that as well.
Yeah.
Thank you so much.
Yeah, I just want to make a comment that, you know, we've had three, three people up here to speak, and it's, when you watch the news, you can get depressed about how you think the world's going bad and so forth, but really, that's the news and that's what they do. A lot of great people out here, they're doing a lot of great things, so there's more good stuff happening than there is bad stuff. So, I just want to make that point. Thank you.
Thank all of you.
Also, there's a lot of, this time of the year, it's always good that we've got funding available that we can help such groups here at the end of the year when they need it the most. So, it's good, so. Okay, moving on. Next is the Drug Task Force Interlocal Agreement. Chief?
Okay. In 2011, I think everybody got a copy of the interlocal from then, so we have a new one to present, and basically, the only difference is, is covering the personal property in the vehicle. Each department is responsible for their own officers. So, I asked our officer that's on there, and he says he has no personal property in there, but that's the difference between the 2011 and the 2019, is the insurance coverage on personal property in the vehicle that they be driving.
For our designated officer.
For our designated.
Not the other one.
Just ours.
Thank you.
Each department is responsible for their own officers. When I asked them what kind of personal property, apparently, some of the guys on the task force bring their own personal guns, their own personal laptops and stuff like that, so the other departments were concerned on who's going to pay if their stuff gets damaged or stolen.
We fully fund our officer, right?
Yeah, I, yeah, I actually called our insurance and we're good, and I, like I said, I talked to our officer, and he doesn't take any of his personal stuff with him, so.
Do we have a, excuse me, do we have a page on this document that we are to sign, or is there a spot for the mayor to sign, or...
If you look at the 2011, the mayor was the only one who signed that. On this new one, there is not an actual page for it, but I know that the council and the mayor both need to sign, but there was not a form attached to this.
So, have you got a signature page to go with this?
I can, I can make one. I don't, it didn't come with it.
Okay. Can you make one and bring it to the next meeting?
I sure can.
And we'll sign it at the next meeting?
Okay.
Will that work?
Get with our office, and we can, we've got that sheet.
You do, okay.
Have you? Okay.
I mean, I don't have this paper, so I didn't know we needed a sheet, so.
I can email, you want to see this?
It's fine. Just get with me tomorrow.
Yeah. Do you, I will take, entertain a motion to go ahead and approve the interlocal agreement, and we could sign this at our next meeting.
I make a motion, we approve the new and improved interlocal drug task force agreement.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any questions?
No, sir.
No questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Okay. Okay, chief? Okay, next up is Resolution 2019-11, Park Reappropriation Discussion. Tony, do you want to do this? You want John to come up to explain why you spent more on electricity?
Yeah. He went out and turned the wheel so it would go really fast. Has everybody had a chance to look at this? I mean, this was a little bit of what we talked about last year. There was an issue with the utilities that the meter at the Parks Department was supposed to be set 40 times, and it was only set on one, so when we got to the end of last year, we were $10,000, $12,000 short, and, and so, anyway, that had to be paid this year, so that's a partial reason. So that's a partial reason for the water increase. And the electric is an additional 8,960 for a total of 21,000 that needs to go back into electric, gas, water, and sewage. John?
No, you nailed it. I have never hit the utility bill. We do have enough in other line items to pay for that. However, we'll be back here at the same time next year, unfortunately.
We've added.
We'll try to do better in May, June, when we set our budgets, but it is what it is. Again, the multiplier really threw us off this year. Thought we had enough appropriated. As you can see, I dropped that line item number two. The park lays on Keith Campbell, and I sat down with it and looked at it too, but I'll be back at the table again next year. Alls I'm doing is moving my own money, or the monies that you appropriated me, that's all it is.
So it's going from capital improvement?
Yes.
To park and.
Let's, um.
So it's a reappropriation.
Right. Let's, next year, when we sit down at budget time, let's try to budget it for next year or for the next year.
I promise you we will.
My other question, Tony, would, do you want, I'm thinking next year. Okay, would you rather wait and us do a reappropriation next year, or later, after Labor Day or something like that, maybe doing an additional to help cover this other?
I mean, we'll need to see how it goes.
Yeah, we don't know. There again, our pool is open eleven days longer this year. I can go on the splash pad. The engineers didn't have all the numbers right. There were a number of variables in there, so as far as that goes, that was just one of the many, that was the major price tag. We'll get it right now that we've had a year under our belt with the splash pad and others, so.
Okay. Okay, I'll.
Do I need to read this?
That's good.
Sure. Resolution 2019-11, reappropriation for the 2019 budget year. Section one, be it ordained by the common council, the city of Lebanon, expenses of the city government, the following appropriations are hereby transferred, set apart from the funds hereafter, named, specified, subject by the laws governing the same. Such sums herein transferred unless otherwise stipulated. It is shown that certain existing appropriations have unobligated balances, which will be available for transferring as follows. And it's 12,412 for water and sewage, 8,960 for gas, and those will be covered by the park capital improvement lines, passed and adopted this day, this 25th day of November 2019.
Okay.
So, we just need a.
I'll entertain, entertain a motion to approve Resolution 2019-11.
Make a motion, we approve Resolution 2019-11.
We have a motion to approve. Is there a second?
Oh, second.
We have a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Ayes have it.
Thank you.
Okay. Next item on the agenda is the Conference of Plan Presentation. Ben?
Good evening, council members. I'll just take just a quick second to just give you a little bit of background, then introduce our consultant to walk you through the comprehensive planning process that we've been going through over probably about the last eighteen months. He'll walk you through that and then introduce you to the website that we've created. In terms of process, this is just an introduction, presentation only. This will be on the Plan Commission's agenda in December for their recommendation on the updated comprehensive plan, then it'll come back to this body at one of your January meetings for adoption. So, just real quick, like I said, we've been working on this probably about eighteen months. Had a few stops and starts along the way, but we're nearing completion. Just want to first thank the Steering Committee. Those first six to nine months with the Steering Committee was, was real hot and heavy, a lot, a lot of meetings, a lot of information that we went through, a lot of discussion to really start formulating the foundation for the plan. So we had about fifteen people that were on that committee, and I want to thank them for all the hard work that they put into this process for us as the sounding board for both staff and our consultant moving forward. We had a number of focus groups we had in those first several months, and dozens of people from the community participate in those focus groups on various different subjects, and helped us start to understand what some of the issues were relating to those items, and how we might be able to formulate some strategies to help correct and address those. And of course, I just want to again thank all the, all the folks that attended the open houses. We held two different open houses in the community, had good participation from the community. Again, a lot of good information was gained from those. And then also, we did a number of different online surveys, and we had hundreds of people that participated in online surveys. Again, when Adam talks here in a second about those, he'll be able to tell you some of the information we were able to glean from that process as well. So again, thank you to everybody that participated in this process. It really is meant to be a public community process. This isn't the planning department's plan, this is really meant to be a community plan. So just to reiterate, and Adam will show you here in a little bit, the format of the new conference of plan is a website. It is a web-based plan. We do not have a printed plan. We will be the first one in the state of Indiana to have an all-digital comprehensive plan. The reason I like this format is because that printed plan, our last plan was on 2007. We've done a few small updates and additions here and there, but primarily, that, that original plan is fairly static. What this website will allow us to do is make changes on the go. So if we have something that changes two months from now, that, you know, one of the strategies needs to change, or we need a new strategy, we can add it to the website. It's something we can just do as we go. So I think that's really going to be helpful for us as we accomplish things in that plan. We can update the website to show things as we're accomplishing them and as we're changing them. And in terms of how we do that, I envision having a small committee that meets maybe once a year, maybe twice a year, to review the goals of the comprehensive plan, make changes as necessary, and then make those updates to the website as well. So, in terms, again, I mentioned the approval schedule already, so with that, I'll just introduce Adam Peeters with Rundell Ernstburg. He's been the lead planner that's been helping us through this process, and he's going to take just a few minutes. I promise you, he'll be very efficient with your time, just to walk through some of the background where we started from, and then walk you through the website, so, thank you.
Ben, I got one question.
Yes, sir.
And he'll probably answer that, but my first question is, the security of the website? I know you talked about you can go ahead and you can make changes. Who's going to keep Brett Wheat from going in there and making changes or something?
Well, we certainly won't want Mr. Wheat going in and making changes. Probably don't even want me making all the changes, I'm not terribly technically savvy either. But it certainly will be as secure as any, any website could be in terms of security. We only have probably one or two people that will have access to that website out of our office.
Okay.
It's making those changes, so we want to make sure that it's fairly restrictive.
Okay.
Good evening, and again, thank you for your time. As Ben said, I'm going to try and move through this efficiently. Certainly, if you have any questions, feel free to interrupt. Can we get it on this screen, or do you guys get it on?
Yeah, we got it here.
All right. So this is, this will be the landing page of the website and the plan, which are the same thing, and I'll get into that more here shortly, but I do want to just touch on a little bit of the purpose. What is the comprehensive plan? Why have it, for those of you that may not be as familiar or deal with it on a daily basis like, like Ben does? Again, he already touched on the process, so I'll go through that pretty quickly. Touch on some of the things we heard through that public engagement process and online surveys. Just introduce you to the organization of the plan, certainly not going to read it to you, but we ask that you do, hopefully spend a little time interacting with it, looking at the content and also the functionality, and then the next steps. So, just real quick, and in its simplest form, the comprehensive plan is the long-range guide for, for both the policy and pattern of development in the community. Indiana law says it has to have those minimum three things. It's pretty easy to accomplish those. We want to obviously go in above and beyond that, so it is an actual useful tool in helping make decisions. Why you need a comprehensive plan? If, the state of Indiana says if you want to have a zoning ordinance, you have to have a comprehensive plan first. And the comprehensive plan is what sets that basis or framework for the zoning and subdivision control ordinances, which are then the primary implementation tools of the comprehensive plan. So the plan is a guide. Your zoning and subdivision control are the law, the ordinance, right? And then beyond that, it's going to be used by Ben and his staff, the Plan Commission, and then ultimately, you all, as you may, evaluate land use or rezoning changes, other development petitions. In terms of why this process is happening right now, it's been alluded to, your existing comprehensive plan was adopted in 2007. Certainly, a lot has changed in the community since that time, both physical land area that needs to be included in this planning initiative, and there's also been another of other plans and studies that have happened that we want to incorporate into the comprehensive plan, again, to provide that legal foundation for other ordinances or policies the city may pursue. Beyond that, again, twelve years later now, we want to make sure that the comprehensive plan is reflective of the current vision and goals of the community. So to make sure we are accomplishing that, our planning process, I will just breeze through this. Like I said, Ben covered it, but our four-phase kind of approach of discovery, understanding, learning everything we can, creating the vision, and then the frameworks, the six organizing frameworks that are the majority of the plan, and then the implementation mechanisms. In terms of the planning area, this is the same as the current plan. It is essentially all of center township, and then obviously, the portions of existing city limits that are outside of that. I will say, one of the things we focused on through this planning effort is being a little more conservative and restrained in planning outside of existing city limits. We want to be proactive, understanding that development that happens there has an impact on areas within the city, or those lands currently adjacent may at one point be developed and ultimately annexed into the city. So like Ben said, we had a couple of open houses during the process. Both these were held at the high school. I know some of you attended, so thank you again for that. And then, so the first open house was early in the process, the issue identification and kind of vision assessment. We had a number of online survey questions. We rolled out one to two questions per week over the course of eight to ten weeks, so we didn't inundate people with like one big, long, you know, thirty-question survey. We directed people to the website and those surveys through some Facebook ads. The second open house was then held later in the process to present preliminary recommendations and findings, and then start to ask prioritization exercises regarding those. So in terms of what we heard through that process, like Ben said, we had a project steering committee that met a number of times, the open houses, and then numerous focus groups, small group discussions. Here are some of the common themes. I won't read all these to you, but one of the things we heard was a need to improve perceptions and community pride, and that frequently, some of the negative attitudes are perpetuated by existing residents, can be your own worst enemy. Heard a lot about additional, additional quality of life amenities, whether it technically falls under that category or not, but a lot of talk of additional retail and restaurant options that came through on a number of the survey questions as well. It's tough for you all certainly to control realization of some of those goals, but as we know, all these things are related, and housing development, additional rooftops are going to be what's needed to support restaurants, and how, how do we accomplish that through this process? And then a lot of talk about older neighborhoods and current housing stock, and then some of the quality, lacking quality affordable options. When I say affordable, I don't mean subsidized, just a living wage. Is there a good house that you can afford in Lebanon for that? And then the last bullet point here, this is kind of a paraphrase of some of what we heard, but is that we know this plan, or ultimately, the community is successful. When people are choosing Lebanon, not because it's what they can afford, it's because this is where they actually want to be. This, if you see this picture over on the right, Ben, and I think Mike, that might be you talking to Ben in this photo. We had this big map on the wall at the first open house, asking people to identify issues and opportunities, so this is kind of the digital result of that. Interestingly enough, kind of comments scattered across, across the study area, no real concentrated issues, which is positive, I think. And then, so I'll just touch on a few of our online survey questions, the full results of which are on the website, which I'll share here momentarily. Through the survey questions, we tried to ask some that reflected existing conditions or an assessment of the current city, some be more forward-looking, some, again, identify issues, some positive, not just be all negative. But in terms of highest priority for future development, again, like I alluded to, retail and restaurant options being number one, and new housing the second most frequently cited response. How important is it for the city to guide development regarding the following issues? So here we see things like improving existing infrastructure, stormwater, lighting, parking, and protecting natural features being frequent responses. Interestingly, landscaping, architectural character, bicycle pedestrian facilities, facilities and signage ranked lower on this question, but then when we looked at, you know, some of the recurring themes and answers to other questions, like entry experience at gateways was frequently regarded as a concern or something that needed to be elevated, and when we would look at that, a lot of times we'd be thinking about landscaping, signage, or architectural character. So, a little bit of a mixed result. I thought this, again, was encouraging to see, or I would hope, from your perspective, you would find this encouraging regarding the pace of recent development. With residential and industrial development, more people said just right than too slow or too fast. Again, the commercial development, too slow, going back to the restaurant and retail options that everyone's looking for. For transportation investments, again, you know, an interest in just taking care of what we have, as well as some additional improvements, pedestrian facilities, bicycle and transit ranking lower. And what should the city's role be regarding improvements to established residential areas? Here, again, streets and sidewalks. And then the second most frequently cited response was potential grants or other loan programs to either incentivize or provide some of the gap financing to realize rehabilitation of older residential structures. So in terms of actual organization of the plan here, let me switch over to the website. As I said, landing page, and if you scroll down, you get to the vision statement right up front in center, and the organizing elements are these six frameworks. So housing, neighborhoods, land use and development, character, transportation utilities, downtown, quality of life, and economic development. Under each one of these frameworks is a goal statement and a series of objectives. So some of these range, I think, you know, a lot of the frameworks have ten or so objectives, up to twenty-some odd for transportation and infrastructure. With each of these statements, they're fairly concise, but you can click to expand and get a little more description with the drop-down, either just clicking the sentence itself or that arrow. Also, there is a map that corresponds to each framework. Floating a little slow, but for land use and development, obviously, this is going to be the future land use map, one of the arguably most important components of the comprehensive plan, the tool that would be used to either inform or support or not support potential rezonings, planning developments, things like that. Again, like I said, we're looking at all of center township here, but whereas the previous, or the existing plan, I should say, kind of showed residential development almost all the way eastward to the township line, we have tried to be more focused in, in those long-range planning efforts, but still obviously provide opportunities for varying housing development types, industrial and commercial development. So I would ask you again, please spend a little time reviewing these. If you have one category you'd be most interested in, certainly spend your time there, but if you can look at all of them, that'd be great. The other major section of the plan are the key initiatives. So as we started prioritizing all these different objectives, of which there are obviously many, we did certainly see some overlap. We know, obviously, land use and development are incredibly related to transportation and utilities, and so on. So the key initiatives are, there's eighteen of them, and they are, what we would say, are obviously going to be the most important policies and programs going forward, and the things that touch on multiple objectives across several of the frameworks. the things that touch on multiple objectives across several of the frameworks. So, you see the little icons and, that correspond to those frameworks, then reiterated here with, or which ones correspond or support this objective. So, the first one, for example, promote infill redevelopment and repurposing of vacant and underutilized commercial and industrial sites throughout the city, supports land use, downtown, economic development, and quality of life. You can click read more. So, again, that initiative statement, but then for each initiative, each of the eighteen, we have a summary, it's the, you know, the background, why this is important, why it's included, with additional supporting graphics, expected outcomes if successful, the short-term actions to begin implementing this initiative, the long-term actions to keep it going, and then the resources, organizations, and implementers that are going to need to be involved when the city undertakes or continues to, to progress with these initiatives. Some additional information under implementation, again, related to early actions, annual review and report, which Ben alluded to, we don't want this to be something that gets adopted, and ten to twelve years later, you have someone like myself standing here talking about why it needs to be updated again. So, at, at least on an annual basis, be reviewing what's been accomplished and can be checked off, what we need to keep working on, are there new issues that need to be incorporated into the plan, or, you know, massaging some of the objectives a little bit because of a change in existing conditions, or, you know, you wanted to support a rezone, but the recommendation was unfavorable because it didn't align with the future land use map, well then, that's a sign that maybe we need to revisit that future land use map, right? So, beyond the plan elements and initiative graphics, there's a maps and documents page, so you can, again, scroll through each of those framework maps. We're actually, we're working on improving the functionality of this and being able to do some call-outs and scroll-overs. This is the first web-based plan that we've done, it's the first one in the state of Indiana, so we're, we're learning as we go through, but again, the static maps are available down here, as well as some other things, like I said, those public survey results, if you want to look at all the questions that were asked. Upwards of five hundred responses on, on some of those questions, which we thought was great, as well as some of the presentations and, and exercises we asked at, at open houses. As the plan progresses and implementation progresses, there's an opportunity to add news updates, or if, if Ben and his staff are getting recurring questions, and can, those can be added here with stock responses. As well as, again, getting on the email list, and then links back to the city website, Planning Department website, contact information. So, then just briefly, I'll say, in terms of next steps, and Ben touched on this, we'd ask that you please look at it, again, both for content, but if you do have any, any issues with website function, we would certainly like to hear those before it gets adopted and rolled out publicly. Let us know what browser or phone you're, you're using, this is a mobile optimized site as well. I don't think too many people will be looking at it on their phone, but maybe an iPad or something like that, certainly. We're going to be sharing the link with the community, so they have a chance to look at it in advance of the Plan Commission hearing, and then it would come to you for consideration. And then the final website, and I know Ben said it's online only, we are also going to be putting together a brief print executive summary, should someone want to look at it or take something with them out of the office where they may not have internet access.
Any questions for Adam or Ben?
Yeah, Adam, this is, is this linked to the city website now?
So, yeah, essentially, the website is live right now, but it is, it's lebanon.pivotmarketing.com, that's our subconsultant who is doing the web development. So, unless someone has some divine intervention and, and gets that address in their head, it's not, the, the link is not posted on the city website right now, but that should be forthcoming, yeah.
So, you, you want us to wait for, until it's on the city site?
Well, we, we probably, we won't link it on the city site until it's been adopted, but we will, we will publicly send out the, the link to everybody, so they-
Will you send the, yeah, send the link out to all of us?
Send the link directly to you in email, yeah.
Okay.
And, yeah, the link will be coming to you all here as soon as, tomorrow-
It'll be before the end of the week.
Okay.
And then, it will be promoted publicly shortly thereafter, when I give, Keith already had to listen to me on Monday, so.
Yep.
Give the Plan Commission and you all.
Keith's already looked at it?
Well, he, this is the second time he's had to listen to me, like I said, we, we were working on some other functionality issues with the website, so we haven't shared the link with the commission.
Mr. Campbell, do you have any questions down there?
I just have one. When you talk about the community, what are you talking about?
Well, so, like I said, this is meant for the city of Lebanon. That being said, we did not record addresses at, at public engagement activities or-
That's what I'm asking, because as we put that out, Lebanon residents should be the ones to reach it, there shouldn't be other folks getting in there, because their input doesn't count.
Yeah, so, if you'd like, we can set up a, a mechanism for communication that requires like an address, if you would prefer, we say, give us your name, address, and your comment, so that we can filter it that way.
Because, I mean, otherwise, any survey that just goes all over the world is, is worthless.
And any group could affect the outcome of that survey.
So, I want it to be as closely as we can to the citizens of Lebanon. That way, we'll know who it is. I don't care, I know their name, but they need to know how to get to that without us.
Sure.
I mean, I understand, a lot of them wouldn't do it if they had to put their name there, but there has to be a way that you guys can control only Lebanon residents. Sure there is.
Well, I mean, we can ask them to submit their contact information, that doesn't mean that they don't give us a false address if they're, but this, this isn't something that's terribly controversial that we expect people to try to sway the outcome, as you said, yeah.
Yeah, but I can tell you, there are certain things that you've seen on this paper that can be skewed, but people don't even live here.
Oh, I, I definitely agree with that. I, I think the results we saw from the surveys, we didn't see anything that was necessarily skewed and out of line with what we expected, so I, I don't know that there was an attempt necessarily to do that, but we weren't, we weren't necessarily shocked by any of the results that we saw either.
Yeah, and I think generally, a lot of the survey results aligned with what we have been heard, both from the Steering Committee and in the focus group meetings. Again, they're all just different pieces of information that were used in our process and not specifically okay. This was the result of this question, so this absolutely has to be what we move forward with.
But once it's all done, it'll be on the city website, so anyone can look at it, yeah.
Yeah, well, yeah, we'll link it from the homepage and from the Planning Department page.
Thank you.
Right, two, question and observation. Nothing against our friends and close partners at the county, but if it's our landing page, maybe the city ought to be on it as opposed to the courthouse, just a thought. My question is, once this is done, it's up and running, sounds like a great idea that this can evolve and do all that, is there going to be a yearly fee to maintain this, or are we doing it all in-house?
Is this in-house maintaining?
Okay.
Yes.
So, no future consultants or any of that?
Not until we do a major overhaul.
Which is reasonable.
Yeah.
Okay. But there's no long-term-
Nope, I'll say, so there will be an annual essentially domain purchase, maybe a hundred dollars, a hundred dollars a year.
Right, I get that, but not a surprise, a hundred thousand dollars to maintain the site or anything like that.
It's been constructed on the back end to be user-friendly, the framework is there, you can go in and edit text within boxes. If you want to dramatically change any of the page layout or functionality, but, no, it's kind of done.
Okay. Any other questions?
Has the Planning Commission already reviewed it and given the okay and everything?
No, no, so they, they had a presentation similar to this at their meeting last week, and we're, we're shipping out the, the link to the website to everybody all at once, once we worked out a few kinks and some of the, the technical issues. So, they, they will be getting it this week as well. They will be, they will be, at their next meeting in December, they will be making a recommendation, once they've had a chance to review it the last few weeks, and then it'll come back to the council in January.
I'd just like to make a comment that I'm very impressed of what I've saw there. I think it's really going to be something really nice for the city. Something you might think about is that the AIM Association, Cities and Town Associations-
Yeah.
-are always looking for something from communities of innovative things that they've done. I, I think, being this being the very first one, it'll be, I think it'll be something that we really need to brag about and so forth. Once it's all done, and it's accepted and working and so forth, you know, I, I think it's something we need to show off, you know, to cities and towns, so, anyway. Any other questions or comments?
No, sir.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, I just add, so, as you get into it, if you have any questions, certainly feel free to call or email me, and I'm obviously Ben. Would love to hear from you. If you want to sit down and talk about it, get a cup of coffee, or meet in Ben's conference room, I'd be happy to do that as well. Want to make sure you all are comfortable with this before we'd be back in December or January.
Yeah. Thank you.
Thank you.
Brent, did you have anything else?
No.
Wait, excuse me. Yes?
Hi, Dick and Council, I wanted to take a minute, and there's a gentleman in town that has worked for the city since, let's see, nineteen ninety-six to, I believe, two thousand and fifteen, Helman Bray. He's not doing very well, he's in the hospice out of Parkwood, and I just know how much he loved the city and how much he really, really did for the city, and I would just like for everybody to possibly pray for him this evening.
Thank you, John.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on down, claims. Claims?
We're better.
Anybody like to make a motion to approve the claims tonight?
We got a motion.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
And we have a second, all those in favor of approving the claims? Say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign, that would sound like nice. Before we adjourn, I would, I would just like to say, on behalf of the mayor, and he's not here, and the city council, we wish everyone out there a happy and safe Thanksgiving and your travels, be careful throughout the week here. Any other announcements?
I was just going to say, Mike took his jacket off, but we got the memo and dressed alike, so, next meeting, tuxedos, I would assume, maybe?
No.
Yeah, just a shout-out, thanks from Mark Branch, Boone County Boys and Girls Club, for sticking through the whole meeting.
Thank you.
Welcome to Lebanon.
Okay, I need one more motion. Motion to adjourn. Do I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
And I've got a second, all those in favor say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Next meeting will be Monday, December ninth, at seven fifteen. Seven fifteen.